Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Eileen Gondaro Foley City Council Chambers for the Regular Meeting of the Portsmouth City Council for Monday, May 4th, 2009. I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone. And at this time, I'd like to ask the Deputy City Clerk to call the roll. And we're getting a little feedback here, just so that you know.
Mayor Farini.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Blaylock.
Here.
Counselor Nobelene Clayberg.
Here.
Counselor Dwyer.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Spear.
Here.
Counselor Hetmanic.
Here.
Counselor Pantalakis.
Here.
All present, Your Honor?
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask Counselor Hetmanic to lead us in a moment of silence for the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please repeat after me. I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Hetmanic. Next on the agenda, I notice we have a number of our friends in blue here this evening. We have a proclamation for Police Week in Portsmouth, which is the week of May 11th through May 17th. And we're going to ask Counselor Ken Smith, who recently went through the Citizens Police Academy, is that correct?
That's correct, as well as Counselor.
As well as Counselor Pantalakis. And I'm going to ask him to read the proclamation. And if you wish to come forward, you'd be most welcome if you want to say a few words.
Thank you. A proclamation. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the members of the Portsmouth Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Portsmouth and the state of New Hampshire. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, sacrifices of their police department. And whereas, the members of the police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against corruption. And whereas, the men and women of the Portsmouth Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Thomas G. Farini, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, on behalf of the members of the City Council, do hereby call all citizens of Portsmouth upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11th to May 17th, 2009, as Police Week in Portsmouth. In appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating all law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedication to their communities and in doing so have established themselves an avail and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and securities of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Portsmouth to observe May 15th, 2009, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their communities or have become disabled in performing their duties. Let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes by lowering all city, state, and American flags in Portsmouth to half-staff on Friday, May 15th. Given by my hand and the seal of the City of Portsmouth on this fourth day of May, Thomas G. Farini, Mayor of Portsmouth.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. I also want to recognize Police Commissioner Jerry Howe, who's also here present along with a number of people from the police force. Does anyone care to come forward and say a word or two regarding this proclamation?
Mr. Bohanko, Mr. Sullivan, and members of the City Council, thank you for the proclamation and thank you for your time tonight. My name is Timothy Cashman, and I am president of the Portsmouth Police Relief Association, a group that represents all the officers of the department, no matter what their rank may be. By the grace of God, our department has never suffered the loss that most recently the Franconi and Manchester, New Hampshire, police departments have had to endure. Or like the French Lick, Indiana, police department, who just lost an officer in a motorcycle accident last Wednesday, Patrol Officer Justin Mullis was the last officer to die in the line of duty nationally as I speak. None of us here knew Officer Mullis, but we will all gather as a family next week in Washington to remember the 134 officers who nationally have died in the line of duty in 2008. This Friday, we will travel to Concord, our state capital, to remember the 33 New Hampshire officers who have died in the line of duty. The Portsmouth Police Relief Association would like to thank the citizens of Portsmouth, the City Council, for their continued support over the past year, and we look forward to working with you all in the years to come. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your dedication. Chief, do you care to say a few words? We'll have you accept the proclamation from Counselor Smith.
Mayor Farini, City Councilors, City Manager, thank you very much. On June 30th of this year will mark my 30th year as a Portsmouth police officer. I was in the academy in September of 1979 when a young patrol officer from Somersworth was killed in the line of duty. He had gone through the academy just before me. And I'll always remember the impact that it had on us, not only as police officers in the seacoast area, but those of us that were in the academy at the time. And over these 30 years, I have seen, time and time again, that New Hampshire is not -- New Hampshire police officers are not immune to the violence that police officers might see, say, in LA or Florida. So it's -- this is a very somber time for us. It's a very serious time, and we appreciate you taking the time out of your meeting to honor us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. If you can accept the proclamation from Counselor Smith. Thank you very much. Next, we move on to a presentation, which will be the Annual Report of Art Speak. And here from Art Speaker, the Chair, Ellen Feinberg, Jane James, board member, Leanne Spees, and Sue Cobbler from staff. And is there anyone else? Steve McHenry as well. If you wish to come forward, I'd appreciate that very much.
I'd also like to recognize Larry Yurden, who's here from Strawberry Bank. Mayor Farini, members of City Council, and City Manager Bohanko. Today, I have the honor to present Art Speak's annual State of the Arts Report. Arts and culture remain a strong and vibrant component of Portsmouth's economy, providing programs and activities, jobs, and venues that enrich the lives of Portsmouth citizens and visitors alike. The rest of the world is acknowledging what we already know. Portsmouth is a terrific setting for arts and culture. For the fourth year in a row, American Style Magazine named Portsmouth among the 25 top small city arts destinations nationally. And you will recall that last October, National Geographic Traveler Magazine ranked Portsmouth number 28 on its World's List of Historic Places and number 6 in that category in the United States. The magazine stated that, quote, "Portsmouth is aesthetically and historically of high caliber. It is alive with positive activity, new businesses, restoration of the local atheneum, and establishment of the Portsmouth Black Heritage Trail," end quote. We see evidence of this thriving arts and cultural life all around us. Here are a few of the accomplishments of our community's arts and cultural agencies during the past year. Pro Portsmouth hosted the 31st Annual Market Square Day with a sold-out road race, that's 1,700 runners, 150 vendor booths, and three stages filled with local and regional music. There were approximately 8,000 people attending and scores of volunteers who made it all come together. Portsmouth Music and Arts Center, also known as PMAC, launched a new summer program for adults with a wide variety of music and visual arts camps. The Portsmouth Historical Society's Discover Portsmouth Center served thousands of visitors in its first season. The Seacoast Science Center's Art in Nature Week, held in July 2008, featured 18 artists leading 34 workshops, attracting 93 young campers and 250 other participants. In September 2008, the music hall opened its new Bozart lobby designed by the Portsmouth firm TMS Architects. As a Boston Globe critic noted, quote, "It also marks the only time my daughters have been dazzled by the architecture of a ladies' room. If the plumbing can impress kids, imagine what the rest of the place will do," end quote. New Hampshire Theater Project celebrated its 20th anniversary season this year with seven different productions, employing over 50 local artists and educational programs that reached 100 adult students and over 2,500 children and teens. Portsmouth-based Sounds of the Seacoast, a 30-year-old women's a cappella chorus of more than 40 women, sang at many community events, including opening night at Prescott Park in 2008 and their own annual Christmas cabaret, a sold-out performance at the KC Function Center in Portsmouth. And finally, the Moffett Ladd House is restoring its coach house, which will open as an exhibit center on June 6th of this year. Major improvements were also made to garden structures and pathways, and the restored large arched window in the house's great hall stairway will be reinstalled this June. The City of Portsmouth both recognizes and supports the contributions of the arts and cultural community. As the city's cultural agency, Art Speak continues to make progress towards implementing the arts and cultural goals of the city's master plan. During 2008, the consulting group hired by the city's Economic Development Commission to work on the Islington Street Corridor Improvement Plan made significant progress, meeting with community members, businesses, arts and cultural agencies, and others as they examined potential long-term and short-term improvements to this vital city artery. Art Speak contributed $12,000 from the National Endowment for the Arts to the study to explore arts and cultural activities along the corridor for the arts-related business sector, as well as individual artists and arts organizations. Art Speak board members and staff continue to be working on the project team and provide input as the corridor plans are finalized. A highlight of Art Speak's year was Overnight Art. Whether you loved or loathed the giant red ant in Market Square, this work of art symbolized the importance of the arts not only in our city, but to the region and the nation. The beheading of the ant made the news from Portsmouth to CNN. The ant was only one of six original artworks that Art Speak commissioned from local artists and were part of the city's fabric for more than three months. Funded by private donations and the New Hampshire State Council on the Arts, the exhibit was available to everyone. Overnight Art expanded our opportunity to live with art. Public art is also the focus of two projects to honor the sacrifices of two very different groups. The African Burying Ground Project made substantial progress in the past year, engaging a nationally-recognized outdoor sculpture artist to collaborate with the committee and the landscape designer on the development of a commemorative installation. The Portsmouth Fire Department commissioned a New Hampshire artist to design a monument to firefighters past and present, which will be unveiled this coming fall. The creation and development of the first new piece of public Portsmouth sculpture, built with private contributions in more than 20 years, will be the focus of Art Speak's 2009 Symposium, scheduled to take place at the Central's Fire Station on June 23rd. There will also be a small exhibit highlighting the inspiration for and creation of the firefighter's monument at the Discover Portsmouth Center over the summer to help visitors interpret the activity as the sculpture site is prepared. Art Speak is working with the fire department on the city's first percent-for-art project for the new fire station on Lafayette Road. More information about this project will be made public soon. In addition, Art Speak is developing guidelines for the city detailing the acceptance of donated works of public art that we will be presenting to the City Council. You may have seen student works of art created by Portsmouth middle and high school students during Youth Art Month in March displayed in area businesses. Art Speak helped to create the link between the students and the businesses, another partnership in support of public arts in our community. Like all businesses, the arts and cultural community is concerned about the economy. As part of the state's budget hearing process, Art Speak board members testified on behalf of the New Hampshire State Council on the Arts, advocating for the restoration of funds to this vital arts and cultural resource. Local organizations, too, are trimming their budgets on their staff to ensure that they will stay healthy. We anticipate that despite tough times, the most resilient arts and cultural organizations will continue to inform, educate, soothe, provoke, amaze, and delight residents and visitors alike. On behalf of the many arts and cultural organizations and Art Speak, thank you for all you do to support the Portsmouth arts and cultural community.
Thank you, Ellen, for your fine presentation. We all, I'm sure, appreciate the hard work that goes into Art Speak and all of the spinoff that it has created. We truly are fortunate in our community to have dedicated people such as yourself, and we thank you.
Thank you, and I have copies of that.
If you want to submit that for the record. Thank you very much. We will do that. Next on the agenda are the minutes of the April 15th and April 2009 meetings. If we have a motion to adopt, we'll do them both together unless someone wants to sub them for any group.
So moved.
Motion, second discussion, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, it's unanimous. We move on to the public comment session. As you know, the public comment session is a three-minute opportunity to address the public and the City Council regarding any single topic. And this evening, we have one speaker. And before we get to the speaker, just remember the rules. You have three minutes to speak. At 2:30, the City Attorney will indicate that by raising a sign that says "Time remaining 30 seconds." And after that, when you see the "Thank you," you have reached the three-minute end of the time period. And with that, we'll welcome this evening's first and only speaker. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. Manager Bohanko, Attorney Sullivan, Mayor Farini, and City Councilors, my name is Donald Coker. I'm a downtown resident, 80 Fleet Street. First and foremost, I want to make it very clear that I'm speaking only as a single individual. I am a member of the planning board, but I cannot begin nor would I speak for any member of the planning board or for any member of any board. Later this evening, Counselor Spear will be discussing something, and I hope you can appreciate the irony of this. The Portsmouth Herald this morning said the rules would require the mayor to not bring forward for reappointment any person who has been on the same board or commission for more than 10 consecutive years, mandate the council act on the potential removal of a board or commission member at the meeting after it was presented, and would presume any person who failed to attend at least 75% of the scheduled meetings of a previous year be removed from the board of commission. Just below that, "Join a city board or commission," in the Portsmouth Herald. That's what moved me to come here tonight. I am opposed to it. I was opposed to it before. I am even more opposed to it now. I'm opposed to it because people that contribute to the boards in this community give of their time, their energy, their expertise, and sometimes even their money. And if one is a productive member of a board, arbitrarily saying at 10 years, you're out of here, is -- it just makes absolutely no sense. It's a similar thing if you go to the registry of motor vehicles, you register your new car. You've been standing in line for six hours, you get up to the window, and the guy says, "Oh, you forgot to check that box. Go fix it and go to the back of the line." It's simply a bureaucratic decision, and it makes absolutely no sense. During my time on the planning board, I have done virtually everything that you could do on a planning board, the CIP Subcommittee, the master plan, been working for two years on the zoning rewrite, it's still not done, but it is getting close, attended statewide planning conferences, attended countless work sessions, and even had, believe it or not, 100% attendance one year. I can't even do that for Rotary, but I did it for the planning board. To say that 10 years, I'm going into my 11th year on the planning board, to say that 10 years and out makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. It takes as much as two, three, and even four years to really learn land use and planning and zoning principles, the law. Where it's applicable, the planning board takes neighbors' concerns, we modify applications. Yours is a political job. Ours is to do good -- let me rephrase. Mine is to do good planning and zoning. Board members should fall on their merits. It's a meritocracy, and it should be, not politics. We've always -- we've been very lucky. We have a good mayor. We may not always be that lucky. So I would urge you, when this comes up, for consideration that you vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coker. And we will now move on to approvals of grants and donations, the first being acceptance of a donation from Mr. and Mrs. King to the Portsmouth Explorers Cadets in the amount of $75. We also have Item B, and I think we can vote these all together, acceptance of the following grants to the Portsmouth Police Department totaling $43,502 from the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency, $10,513.80 for Portsmouth statewide DEW hunter patrols and sobriety checkpoints, $4,153.60 for Portsmouth pedestrian enforcement patrols, $4,153.60 for Portsmouth enforcement patrol speed enforcement, $4,248 for Portsmouth DWI patrols, $4,153.60 for Portsmouth red light running, $2,725.80 for Portsmouth Join the New Hampshire Click Seatbelt Campaign, and $13,593.60 for the Portsmouth sobriety checkpoints local. The motion be to approve and accept the grants and donations for the police. I'm moved. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, it's unanimous. We next have an acceptance of a grant for household hazardous waste collection. We'd be accepting $4,000 and $4,005 DES grant for the purpose of collecting household hazardous waste and scheduling these events, authorizing the City Manager to execute any documents which might be necessary for this grant contract. So moved. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a second discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, it's unanimous. Next, under consideration of resolutions and ordinances, we have the third and final reading of Warden and Cementing, Chapter 7, Article 2, Section 7.213, fees and terms for permits and licenses for taxicabs. We'd be moving to pass third and final reading.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, it's unanimous. We move on to the consent agenda. A motion would be in order to accept the consent agenda, and I'll briefly read it for you. A letter from Cindy Blanchett, Portsmouth City Soccer Club, requesting permission to hang banners at Larry Field during soccer season. A letter from Brian and Laurie Cochrane, requesting permission to have a small gathering in Market Square for the installation of a bench to dedicate the memory of their son, Jeffrey. And finally, a renewal of sidewalk obstruction license with no changes from last year for vanity hair, one A-frame sign. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, it's unanimous. We move on to Item 11, presentation and consideration of written communications and petitions. The first, a letter from Mario Giberti, requesting to purchase city-owned land located at -- adjacent to 16 Barbary Land. The preferred motion would be to move this to the planning board for report back.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, it's unanimous. The next is a letter from Meredith Stolper, Loaf and Ladle, requesting permission to display their open sign or a decorative flag in front of that establishment. Do we have a motion to refer this to the City Manager with power?
So, second.
We have moved in seconded discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, and it unanimous vote. And Item C, a letter from Susan Penny to the American Cancer Society, requesting permission to conduct a toll raiser, a toll road fundraiser in Market Square, and there's a memorandum that we have received in that regard. Before we get into a motion on that, I'd like to ask the City Manager to briefly discuss that.
Your Honor, there are concerns because of the traffic taking place. These would be individuals that would be going out into Market Square and soliciting donations. I know we've done it in the past for firefighters, but I'm concerned with the activity that goes on in Market Square. To have people in the travel lane could be a problem. I'm not comfortable with it, especially those that are not used to the type of traffic, being in the travel lane. It just, to me, presents some issues that might -- I know they've done it in other places, but I'm uncomfortable with it. I usually am not uncomfortable with fundraisers, and it's a very, very worthwhile cause, and I feel awful saying that they shouldn't be able to do it. But, you know, what happens if we have multiple requests to go into the Market Square, into the roadway? I just have a real problem with it. I mean, I can work with the people from American Cancer. Maybe what I could talk to them about would be maybe when on State Street, when the bridge goes up, maybe we could talk to them about something, or, I don't know. But in Market Square, I just, I don't know what the council members feel. I'll do whatever you feel is appropriate, but I'm just somewhat concerned about that.
For the record, thank you for that report, John. John has just offered his opinion in these regards and his concerns. There is not a motion pending. So we could -- his opinion in these regards and his concerns. There is not a motion pending. So we could accept the letter and place it on file and take no action. We could move it to the city manager with power. The other consideration, just so that I raised the issue, is in the past, we did do this for MS with the fire department and take, and I'd like to ask John to address this, but, but this might be one of those, we do it for nobody sort of situations, and we let the past be the past. We don't need to have formal motion practice on this unless someone prefers to do so. And so I, I guess the preferred motion would be a motion to accept and place on file unless someone feels more strongly otherwise. Counselor Spear.
Well, we could. When you say move to the city manager with power, what does that mean with power? I mean, i- isn't that mean you're using your discretion in some ways?
It does.
To do this? So, I want our city manager to be comfortable.
Well, I, in this particular instance, I prefer you to place it on file, and then I can work with them.
Work with them to.
Because it, you know, it, it, it kind of connotes that you've approved it.
Okay.
It does.
And I move to place it on file.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Smith.
Thank you. Just brief discussion. While I agree with all the points that have been made, the one I, I don't have a problem with is when the fire department does go out and do their boot drives. They are professionals. They, they usually have their, their safety equipment on as well, and their vests. It's, they're out there in uniform. So it's, I, I just want to make that one comment, that I, I don't have an issue when the fire department does it, or the police department does it, because they're trained professionals, you know. But, you know, it's, this is one of the instances where, you know, we, we don't know what kind of training or what they're going to do. I, I don't feel comfortable putting anyone's safety in, into traffic.
And, and for the record, thank you, Counselor Smith. For the record, were that to come forward, you know, midsummer for Labor Day, then we'd address that on a case-by-case basis, and that's not before us presently, but thank you for the commentary. We have a motion to accept and place on file. Any further discussion, Counselor?
Just for clarification, if we vote for that, our city manager will talk to the American Cancer Society about what-
I will. I'll call him.
What else they-
He has indicated he would.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Your honor, I apologize for this, but this afternoon, a gentleman came in, Josh Pierce, the president of Seco Series Bicycle Roots, and they would like to have their annual Bike Walk to Work Day in front of Popovers. They've done it for the last few years. It's scheduled for May fifteenth. It's at, from seven AM to ten AM. There has never been a problem with them doing this. I would ask that if you could allow me to, with power, to go forward with this event.
Just to add a little bit of history on that, the city manager's going to pass this out. It is not coincidence that we do not ever pass stuff out at a meeting. In this particular case, we got it. Given the timing of it, typically Counselor Reynolds in years past would have brought this forward. So it's something that many of you have seen before. So I, I appreciate your indulgence in allowing us to pass it out at this time. It's not something we would typically do. And the rule exists for a reason. So the city manager has requested that, that this be moved to him with power. If that were the motion and there needed to be discussion and inquiry, we could certainly go forward in that fashion.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, unanimous. And now, we continue on to what had already been begun, which was reports and communications from city officials. And with that, we'll go to John Bohenko.
Thank you, your honor. There's just three items that are pretty mu, are, are the same. And you'll probably be seeing later on a policy dealing with this, but it is relative to three report backs from the, from the planning board on, on, on signs that extend over into the right of way. And the first one deals with Anello's Gluten-Free Cafe at forty-one Congress Street. You can see what the recommendation is from the planning board, and I would recommend that you accept the recommendation from the planning board with the stipulations.
Okay, so the preferred motion would be to accept the recommendation of the planning board with the stipulations as indicated, and approve the request of Anello's Gluten-Free Cafe LLC to install a projecting sign at forty-one Congress Street, further authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement for this request. Does anyone care to make the motion?
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Thank you, your honor. The next one, we have a similar request, report back from the planning board for a license, the Juicery at fifty-one Hanover Street. Same stipulations would occur. Having heard that and the city manager's offering, we'd need a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning board in that regard.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Do we have a second? Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. I had three.
Thank you, your honor. The third one is, is for the request for Falalow, Portsmouth fifty-one Series Street, similar type as we've discussed in the last two. So it asks for the same type of action.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
The only thing I want to note is that we had three more come in, and we sent them directly to the planning board, because I had taken the liberty to, I talked to the mayor, and basically with this new policy, I thought it might be in the best interest just to get them to the planning board. And then those will come back to you for ratification if the planning board deems appropriate. The other thing, I, just a couple other items that I have, just want to let the council, just remind the council that next Monday night, we reopen the public hearing on the fiscal term budget. And that next, and then Wednesday, May thirteenth, we have our final work session on the budget unless the city council wants to proceed and have another, which is possible if it, that's the requirement of the city council. Just also, in discussing this matter with the mayor, and give, and also discussing with Councilor Pantolakis, who is a state legislator, as well as been a council member, that probably be in our best interest right now to look at June twenty-second for the adoption of the budget. We had originally scheduled it for June eighth. There are a couple of major revenue items that the, that the, that the state is looking at. The Senate is working on the budget. Hopefully, we'll have a better understanding by the twenty-second. The major item is, is general revenue sharing, and, and that's about six hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. Also, aid for buildings, which is the high school bond, which is a million dollars that we receive in grants each year. So June twenty-second probably will be our, our ideal time to do that, given the circumstances that we have right now in the budget process. Under the charter, you need to adopt the budget by June thirtieth. I, I guess no matter what happens with the budget, with the, the state, I suppose on the twenty-second, we should move forward. And I would defer to any, to either Councilor Pantolakis or others to, if they have any comments as we go.
But before we get to comments, there's not a motion pending. I know Counselor Kennedy wishes to speak, and we'll have her speak certainly, and Assistant Mayor Blair. I'll just comment, just, just to offer one or two scheduling considerations. We need to make sure that we inform the school board that we're going to do that, that we may do that, because it may affect how they deal with their contracts. In addition, in the event we find, and we'll communicate closely with counselors, either through the weekly reporter, through telephone calls, information we get from the legislature, et cetera, if we find that the situation is going to coalesce in Concord sooner than that, then we would afford the courtesy of, of that information to the school board and perhaps move the meeting up for the final vote of the budget. Additionally, just one other housekeeping thing, and we can get to it even under my portion of the agenda, we may want to look at scheduling, and that would be appropriate under my portion of the agenda, looking at scheduling of any additional work sessions this evening, just so we have a sense, given things as they are now. So I just offer that to set the table. Additional people wish to speak, so let's get to that. Counselor Kennedy.
Um, I was actually going to suggest that we hold, I, I really don't feel a need to do a work session until we have some more detail from the state. So I actually was wondering if we could even move the thirteenth, May thirteenth work session out until we get this, because I think the state information is going to be very, be part of the work session. I mean, I think that's going to be real crucial.
Let me just add to that. There's two portions that are really part of the work session, given that three out of four came in at zero or lower. There are a set of questions that have been sent to the school department as a result of input from the council for various statistical information about their, their budget and class sizes, things of that nature. It, it may well be, and we can, maybe we should have that discussion now, about where we go with that and how we schedule the opportunity for them to discuss those budgetary impacts, if you recall receiving that. So I, I hear what Counselor Kennedy says. Do you want to have the, the scheduling discussion now?
Your honor, it might be useful. I could contact Dr. Lister tomorrow and see if he would be available along with the, the, the school boards coming on Wednesday, May thirteenth, to go over your questions that you sent out. I, I guess that would be the only time we'd have available at that particular week.
Well, and speaking to Counselor Kennedy's concerns, the other issue will be, it's a, it's a bigger picture issue. And, and so how, how would you suggest?
You have the right-
We could do one on the thirteenth, let's say.
Right. I mean, you have the right to call a meeting at any time, under the, under the rules. And so if there is a need to call a meeting, the, the mayor can call that meeting and with due notification of the city council.
Typically, what we have done, just again, to sort of, in thinking in terms of agenda and process, it is, it has often been the case that we will have a final meeting, where we will look at all of the remaining issues. In this case, it's a little different than usual. We've got that bit of information we need from the school department, and then we've got the information from the state as that rolls forward. So they're really two different things from a timing perspective, John.
May I suggest that the only thing out of your control is the revenue side of the budget?
Right.
So my suggestion for the thirteenth is, is, would be to try to get through your expenditure side of the budget, deal with that, because that's under your control. And then anything that might happen in Concord would be the revenue side of the budget. And certainly, at that point, we would have to get back together. If things go the way I hope they go, we would, we would have that twenty-one cents of the, the tax rate increase is split between the county and the, the reduction in, in, in the aid that came out of the House. We have already made provisions for that within the budget. So if they go further, then that would be the problem. But I would suggest that on Wednesday, that you try and get through all your expenditure side and deal with that as best you can, so that if you feel you need more time to talk about the expenditure side, you would be able to set a date and time that night.
If, if Counselor Kennedy, if you're comfortable with that without a formal motion, it may well be, once we find what the state does, that we may want to look at additional, discuss additional issues with regard to our budget regardless of the expenditure side. So, but that would be premature at this time. So I think that's something that's been put out there, and, and we can look at it on the thirteenth, perhaps have additional legislative information by that time and see where we are, without setting a formal meeting at this time, knowing that it's possible.
Your honor, did you want me to invite the school board for, I mean, does the council want the school board in on Wednesday?
I think it's appropriate for them to be there if we're going to ask those questions and discuss their budget. We would like to issue that invitation.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Nope, appreciate the reminder. So with that, we have no real motion pending. John, do you have anything else under your?
That's all I have, your honor.
Thank you. Next, we move to my portion of the agenda. First item is the proposed amendments to the city manager's employment agreement. You have a memorandum in your package which indicates that the city manager has made an offer to reopen his employment contract, foregoing a salary increase for fiscal year ten from July one, two thousand nine through June thirty, two thousand ten. And, and I'm, you know, I certainly think it's a, a fine idea and a, and a, an offering of leadership and integrity. In addition, as part of this, we would be in a position to extend the city manager's employment agreement by two years, such that it would expire June thirty, two thousand fourteen. And I've also indicated my own opinion in that regard, that it's the right thing to do for our city, and I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to discuss it. There's a proposed amendment in there, and if someone would wish to put the ball in play.
I'd like to make a move to authorize the mayor to execute the following amendments to the city manager's employment agreement. One, employee will waive his cost of living adjustment COLA effective July first, two thousand nine. Two, employee medical premium share will increase from nineteen percent to twenty percent on July first, two thousand ten. Three, commencing July first, two thousand ten, and every July first thereafter through July first, two thousand thirteen, the employee will receive a COLA adjustment based on ten, on, on the ten-year rolling average of the CPIU for the Boston-Brockton Index, to be in conformance with other city employment agreements. And four, the term of the agreement to be extended by two years to expire June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. Further that all other terms and conditions of the city manager's employment agreement dated October twelfth, two thousand six shall remain in full force and effect.
I'll second.
We have a motion duly seconded discussion. Counselor Noveling Claver.
Um, I would like to thank our city manager for addressing this issue, the dire position that our economy is in. It once again exhibits his incredible leadership and integrity in our community, and it's just a wonderful act to, to perform in this particular economic climate that we're in. And thank you, John, for doing this for our city and our citizens.
Further discussion. Counselor Smith.
Thank you. I just want to go on record saying the same. It's, it does show the leadership. I'm glad he came forward with this. This wasn't something we asked him to do. This was something he came out and, and did on his own, and I really appreciate it, and thank you. And I know the citizens of Portsmouth also appreciate it.
Any further offerings, Mr. Garrett? Counselor, I have a mon-
I will echo that. I think the sacrifice the city manager is making, sets an example of what good leadership is about, recognizes that the suffering of some of our taxpayers, and try to offset that. So I want to thank him for doing it.
Anyone else care to speak? Counselor Kennedy.
And I also think that it's really clear that once the city manager decides not to take the COLA, he'll never earn back that money. So I think it's a bigger sacrifice than just for this year. He's making a long-term sacrifice for the city, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Kennedy. Counsel, Assistant Mayor Blalock.
Yeah, the, well, the selfless act here of, you know, offering to give up a wage increase is, is never one, an easy one for anyone. And, but what it does, it not only, you know, saves the city money, it's just going to, it's going to allow us to hopefully prevent layoffs that we, none of us want to, want to see. It'll hopefully encourage other city employees to maybe follow suit if the occasion arises. And it, it does, it does show that employees in, in this city do, do kind of care about each other. So I think it's going to help this, this council certainly prevent any unnecessary damage to our, to our employees.
Anyone else care to speak? If not, I'm going to pass the gavel to Assistant Mayor.
Mayor Farini.
Thank you. I too want to thank John, and I certainly echo all of your comments. I'll, I'll, rather than repeat them, add a new one, and that is that it demonstrates particular understanding on his part of what community spirit is all about. And indeed, as he sets, what I sincerely believe is an example for others in the same position, know that in the private sector, which isn't dependent upon taxing authority money, significant sacrifices are being made. And so in the public sector, to see someone like John recognize the, the difficulty that our, our taxpayers have in an economy like this is, is truly helpful, and I, I'm sure everyone appreciates it. I know I do, and I, I thank him once again for his leadership, and I certainly intend to support it. With that, the question has been, the, the proposed amendment has been made and duly seconded. Discussion has been offered. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Congratulations, John.
Thank you.
Next, we move on to appointments for consideration. Brian Gregg for reappointment to the Cable Television and Communications Commission, and Phyllis Eldredge for reappointment to the trustees of the trust fund. And so that's for consideration only. We don't need any motion. We also have two resignations this evening, one from Skymar of the Conservation Commission, and one from John Gollum on the Safe Routes to School Commission. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept with regrets with the letter to follow and thank him for the service.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose.
You have discussions.
Oh, no, let's vote first.
Okay, we'll have the vote. Well, no, we shouldn't have the vote. We should have the discussion.
Okay.
Sorry.
I just wanted to note, I think Skymar makes a couple of points in her letter, and I, I think her service is really exemplary related to the issue of term limits, because she has served long on the Conservation Commission and encourages people to move on and serve on other things. And I, her example of moving on herself to serve on the Sustainability Committee, both the City Sustainability Committee, and then to do lots of things related to the study circles and serve on a community-wide Sustainability Committee, to take and transfer her skills and knowledge from the Conservation Commission and to spread it into other committees around the city, both public and private, also including Portsmouth Listens, I think is the kind of thing that we had hoped would happen by encouraging folks to serve for a good long time on committees and then link their service to other committees. So I, I, I think her service is something that we should remember as the model when we're talking about what we're trying to do by having people not serve for thirty or forty years on one committee, but in fact, serve in a variety- in fact, serve in a variety of capacities.
Well said, Council Dwyer. Anything further on this issue? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Proposed, it's unanimous. Next, we go to the Memorial Day Parade. There's a memorandum in your packet indicating that the parade will begin at the corner of Junkins Ave on Parrot Ave at 12:30 PM. It steps off at 1 o'clock. Will proceed down Parrot Ave to Junkins, to Pleasant through Market Square to Congress, to Middle to Richards, and into the South Cemetery for the service. All city councilors are certainly welcome, and when we depart the cemetery, there'll be an opportunity for a viewing of the parade, and typically there's a barbecue in City Hall lot. Additionally, since we have all been asked to attend, if you know you're going to come, please let the office of the city manager know, so we can let the veterans know who's going to be there and celebrate Memorial Day. I do not believe, we've discussed meetings already under the city manager's portion of the agenda, so I have nothing further. But I, I will say, and I'll do this now rather than get through this, there are a couple of items being proposed here as rule changes further on under Counselor Dwyer's name, under Counselor Smith's name, recommendations for the vendor committee. Just, let's make sure when we're going through the discussion, if this isn't something that requires a motion to pass tonight, we remember that it will be on at a later date when formal discussion and practice will occur. So I just, I just offer that if it's appropriate. With that, Assistant Mayor Jack Blalock.
Thank you, Mayor Frini. The vendors committee, we've met several times in the past couple of months to, pretty much to clarify the situation for the sake of the public and certainly for the vendors as they begin to renew their licenses for the upcoming season. And the recommendations before you are not up for vote tonight. They hopefully will be up for vote at our next meeting on the 18th. So they're here for you to familiarize yourself with. Basically, probably the first and most important is to how, where, what locations vendors in the downtown area can legally be. And Jason Page and Kim McNamara worked very hard on working through the current zoning, current ordinances that we have. So everything, all these, as you see in your last pages, seven pictures of locations with, pretty much designated by specific addresses, so you know exactly where the place is. By taking the various ordinances already in the books, and making measurements, and taking into account this, that, and the other thing, they've come up with there's seven places where food or non-food vendors can be downtown. So we want to make that clear, so it's easy to define when someone gets a vendor's permit, where they can be, because all the ordinances obviously address where they cannot be. So this will be made into a brochure with the pictures and the addresses where the locations are, and the wording hopefully will include the policy that the city council will hopefully adopt at our next meeting, which will be policy number 2009-whatever, because depending on what number we're on. And it basically simplifies and clarifies what vendors can do, what size their vending carts can be, because obviously these spaces are pretty much defined by a certain space. So this, they've done, as I said, Kim McNamara and Jason Page did extensive work on looking at various carts, what are the common ones that are manufactured, what works from a food safety point of view, and this, there again, takes into account both food and non-food vendors. So take your time to look this over. If you have any questions for me tonight, that's, I'm here to answer them, and we'll bring it forward next, at our next meeting.
Thank you, Jack. We have, Council Kennedy.
Jack, I wasn't quite sure who's the vendor from the vendor committee. How many vendors were part of this rulemaking?
It was open to the public. We've had three meetings. The vendors committee is made up of myself and city staff on the actual committee. And at the different meetings, we had a few vendors attend, not as many as you would think, but it was certainly open, it was advertised, but not that much input from vendors themselves. We did have a couple show up. We had representative from, for Portland, for example, come and give their knowledge to what they had observed, because there's different issues. What we're addressing right now is really the sidewalk vendor downtown. And then, you know, another issue, we'll come back at another time, where we're addressing special event type things. But this is really to simplify the permitting process, because it gets a little confusing. The permits are issued through the city clerk, but they're really kind of enforced by the health inspector and/or the police if necessary. So we want everybody to kind of be on the same page, so that we're not giving permits that shouldn't be given, or if we do give one, they know where they stand. So there's no confusion onto where they can be and how many can be there.
There was a, I remember a while back, there was a question though between, and I noticed, I think I remember reading in here too, there was a problem between event vending and everyday vending on the street. So would that be part of this?
Yeah, this is for everyday vending. The event vending will come back, we'll come back with a separate, right now, we're just trying to, we're not proposing any ordinance changes yet. We want to establish this policy based on current ordinances. And then hopefully, if this works out in the future, we may come back with a cleaner ordinance that addresses vending per se, both regular, everyday vending and/or special event vending in the future.
Okay, and when you're talking about that they cannot vend out of a parking spot, can they leave a vehicle in a parking spot and have a trailer somewhere else on the street?
Well, we have referred this to the Traffic and Safety Committee. In fact, two members of that committee attended today's meeting. And we have also, we are preparing a memo to refer to the Parking Committee meeting, which meets later this month.
Yep.
To get their feedback, because that's important. And what we understand is parking, space is up for parking, and parking rules must be enforced. So this is really addressing just sidewalk vending. We need a determination from traffic, safety, and parking as to the mobile vendors that drive around and park in a space. That's a separate issue. This is really for the vendor who may bring a cart downtown with their trailer, unload it, put it in front of Foster's Daily Democrat, which is one of the spaces, probably the most popular space, and then, you know, put their vehicle somewhere else and vend for that day, or however long they're there. And so we just want to kind of take one type of vending at a time.
Okay. And I'll hasten to remind everyone, it's not on for discussion yet, but if there are questions that are going to help focus it for the next go, that's a good thing. Counsel Spear.
Thank you.
And then Counsel Smith. Yep?
When you were, the people, the stakeholders, I guess, that you had in your discussions, did they include other downtown merchants? I mean, this was looking at it from, from the city's standpoint, from health and safety and sizing and things like that, but were there, did you go beyond that, or is that going to be addressed later in the ordinances?
Well, no downtown merchants attended the meeting. All we really discussed was what's the current, what are the current ordinances that govern downtown vending?
Okay.
To kind of clean it up, because I think there's, it was, the reason it took so long, and why there was so much work involved, because the ordinances are in different places. And I'll just give you a few examples off the top of my head, because I don't want to be misquoted. You can't be within 50 feet of a place of assembly. You can't impede parking spaces. For example, you can't be so close to the curb where someone couldn't open their car door, for example. You have to allow three feet for pedestrian passage on a sidewalk. So when you measure all these things out, there's only a few spaces, these seven, that fit all those criteria and whatever other criteria there is. There's more than just the ones I mentioned. But, so that, those are current laws that are enforceable, already in place. We're not creating a new ordinance, and we just want to adopt, have the council adopt a policy really to provide a simple brochure for the benefit of licensed vendor. And I think all those ordinances are in place to protect the downtown merchants. For example, 50 feet in front of, you can't be within 50 feet of a place of assembly, which includes restaurants.
Okay. Counsel Smith.
Just, in looking over this, I know the two hot dog vendors that go out at night, that are, one's by Atrezzi and the other one's down by the Page, those locations aren't in the photographs. Would it be that those would no longer be allowed?
From my understanding, the one that's in the parking area near Atrezzi is not a legal vending space according to current ordinances. And I guess the closest one would be the picture on, oh, number six outside the parking garage in High Hanover, so just up the hill, which is really in the same spot, but just on that.
They'd have to move up to there.
Yes. And that's under current ordinance. I mean, right now, that particular spot is not a legal vending space, because it's probably within 50 feet of something it's not supposed to be, or the fact that it's on, I wouldn't call that a street, but, you know, from what I understand, browsing the ordinances, that is not a legal space.
Your honor, if I might.
Yes.
At the May 18th meeting, it was my intent to have the staff here that worked with the vending committee to discuss this further. The beauty of utilizing the policy is it really helped focus the vending committee to look at all the different ordinances and try to memorialize them in this policy. And as we go forward, if there's something that needs to be changed in the policy, city council can simply ask the vending committee to look at it, bring it back, and the council has every right to adopt, amend, or delete these policies as they see fit.
Okay, and I'm gonna, noted by the city manager, and I'm going to take this opportunity to reiterate again, no motion is required. There is going to be a presentation with regard to each of these. They're put here for informational purposes in the first instance. I'd like you to take that into consideration, because if you talk about it now, however brilliant your offering may be, it's really not dispositive in terms of where we're going to end up. So I appreciate the informational questions, but we'll just try to remember what's going to happen at the next meeting. And with that, anything further, Jack?
Well, just one more comment, and just, these seven spaces were derived by just taking the current ordinance and looking at it, you know, because as you know, as you probably are familiar, ordinance are always telling you what you can't do.
Right.
And these are just simply telling you what you can, using the ordinances telling you what you can't. So these are all based on current ordinances, with no ordinance changes.
Yeah. Counsel Dwyer.
I don't want to make work for anyone, but I, your explanation has already helped me to realize that this is, this is nesting within existing things.
Yes.
I wonder if we could, I know we just got ordinance books, if we could just have a list of the, as we review them, the ordinances that this relates to, just so we're familiar with what the surround is of existing ordinances that this is fitting with.
So citations to pertinent ordinance.
Right, just so that when we review it, we fully look at everything else.
Noted, Counsel Dwyer. Anyone else on this issue? Thank you, Assistant Mayor Blalock and the committee for the hard work. That's a pretty significant piece of work and a lot of detail. Moving on, Counsel Dwyer. You're up.
Yes, and this is here for a vote. This is what we brought up at the last meeting, which is the projecting sign policy. And basically, this describes the practice that we followed over the last, with the last two meetings, where the desire for permit for a, request for a sign goes first to the planning board, rather than the convoluted way we have been doing it, and then comes to the city council for, with a recommendation.
So with that, Counsel Dwyer, do you care to move your, the policy you have brought forward?
Yes, policy number 200903 for approval.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed. No one. Thank you, Counsel Dwyer. And we move on to Counsel Smith.
Thank you. I have two items. The first one is for the proposed permit for the overnight parking at Pierce Island. I'd like to request the city, to make a motion to authorize the city manager to bring back this proposal on our, for our first reading on May 18th. If I can get a second, I'll discuss it.
Second.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded. Discussion.
This is basically, this was an idea that came to me through a citizen who, they go down, they launch their boat, and then they get to do something when they're going to go out overnight, on their boat. And what are they supposed to do with the vehicle? Because there's no overnight parking there. So in working with them, this is what we've come up with. It's gone through the Pierce Island Committee, and I'd like to be able to get this ordinance changed, so that, a limited number of permits, limited to six for overnight parking, but this way, someone has something to do with their vehicle while they're going out and using the boat launch, which is what we're trying to encourage.
Thank you, Counsel Smith, for the explanation. The motion's been made and duly seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed, it is unanimous. Counsel Smith.
Thank you. My second item is under the valet parking. I'd like to make the motion to authorize the city manager to execute the license for a 90-day trial period. If I can get a second, I'll discuss it.
Motion made. Seconded. Counsel Smith.
Just for the record, also, members of Atlantic Parking are here. Basically, this is an agreement to do a valet parking service in the downtown. It is a 90-day trial only, be evaluated, and the intent of this is to be, so that it's kept fluid. We can make adjustments on the fly. I've had numerous conversations with the members, people who reside right there at 18 Congress. Not all of them, but most of them are in favor of it, and I'll be in touch with them, or they'll be in touch with me, I'm sure, if there's any issues. I know the city staff has worked very closely with Atlantic Parking to be able to try this, and remembering that this is something that does come out of our master, our master plan that we did, to be able to come up with alternative parking solutions. The idea of this is, again, that they will valet park. It's $10. You come in, they take your car. They have two parking areas. One is going to be over at Harbor Place. The other one's going to be over on Green Street. They have staff. There's going to be runners back and forth. I'm sure if this, as, you'll see this thing progress, or if you have any other questions on it, I think it's going to be a good idea to really be able to move, they're predicting about 100 to 150 cars into alternative parking locations.
Thank you, Counsel Smith. We have a motion duly seconded. Further discussion. Hearing none. Counsel Kennedy.
I just want to know, is there any legal potential for us to agree to this and everything?
I believe the council has the authority under this agreement.
No, no, I realize that, but if we agree to this, is there any legal say someone's car gets damaged and all that?
The agreement has the whole harmless provision in it under which Atlantic Parking will be responsible.
Okay.
Further discussion.
As well as, they have a obligation to hold insurance.
Noted for the record. Anything else? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, it's unanimous. And proposed rules, Counsel Spear.
Thank you. I've worked up three, with the help of a lot of fellow councilors. The attorney and I worked up a few potential council rules for your consideration. Again, we're not voting on them tonight, so I'm happy here to give you any more information. And please feel free to come to me later on with improvements. I'm going to explain them in English, one at a time, and then the city attorney can correct me if I botch it. The first one, Council Rule 47, this is the 10-year rule, which, as many of you remember, we discussed this back almost two years ago, or a year and a half ago. And I'm not going to reiterate all the discussions we had back then, except to note that I took into consideration a lot of comments people had at that time. And this is the same rule with the provision, or the additional stipulation, that this provision would not apply to the land use boards or traffic and safety. And so I think it builds on what we had done before and what people had said. The next rule, number 48, I and other councilors have often wondered, what is, is there a procedure for removal from a board or a commission? And not that we have anyone in mind, no one in there in TV land should be thinking that, but it would be nice to have a procedure in place before the situation should arise. And so this is a nice time to do it, when we don't have a pressing item. And the procedure is basically, that we've outlined, is basically the reverse of the procedure to appoint somebody. Right now, the mayor nominates for appointment, and we vote on them two weeks later. In this process, the mayor would suggest someone for removal, and then at a subsequent council meeting, we would vote to remove. The last rule addresses an issue that has been on the minds of some councilors for some time, and that is the issue of attendance. And so this is an informational rule. We would ask, once a year, it would be the policy of the council, that we would ask the city manager to prepare a list of members who have been absent more than a quarter, more than a 25% for the past year. And then, we would assume, I think the idea would be in that we would then And then we would assume, I think the idea would be in that we would then begin the process to remove those people. Now, we still want to go through the process, because obviously, if someone is ill or there's extenuating circumstances, there's no reason to remove someone in those cases, so it still would go through, nothing is automatic here. But it's an informational piece, so we could deal with that. We already get attendance records right now, but this is a simpler way to get at it, because if you notice the attendance, if you want to figure out twenty-five percent yourself, you got to go through each one, how many meetings did each board have, and then it can be a little bit of a trouble. So this kind of highlights those people. Those are the three rules.
Thank you, Counsel Spear. Counsel Novlin Clayburg.
I just have a question. Attorney Sullivan, where we voted on the ten-year rule within the last year, do we vote on it, can we vote on it again, or how many times can you vote on an issue?
The, excuse me, the, I drafted these rules at the request of Counsel Spear. The ten-year rule that you have in front of you is slightly modified from the ten-year rule that you saw before. I believe you can vote on it, following the council rules, which means you got to vote on it at the next meeting, or have a two-thirds majority suspension rules to vote on it, but I think you can vote on this.
Counsel Dwyer, then Counsel Kennedy.
Some clarifications in number forty-nine. The rebuttable presumption.
Yeah, the, what Counsel Spear wanted to do was create the situation where the council could address removal of a member who had missed seventy-five percent of the meetings, but that the council not be obligated to remove.
Got it.
For example, that was given, and this has happened in the past, a committee member is sick for a long period of time, misses more than seventy-five percent of the meetings. That would rebut the presumption that that person needed to be removed.
Right. Thank you.
Counsel Dwyer.
And then a second question, I, and I'm going to assume, I know the meaning of failed to attend, that, that also, if there's an excused absence, it would still count as a failure to attend, and I say that from having looked at the attendance records myself and seeing that there are some people who are simply excused absence for a whole year. It doesn't make a lot of sense. Is that your intention?
I believe an excused absence is still an absence.
Okay.
Further discussion. Counsel Kennedy.
I guess my question is, is why are there some boards that are allowed to have, according to this rule, or would be according to this rule, have people stay on more than ten years and not other boards? And my other question for clarification would be, what kind of due process does an individual have in rule number forty-eight?
Counsel Spear, do you care to speak to it in the first instance?
Sure. With regarding rule number forty-seven, I'm working on the presumption that not all committees and boards are created equal, to be honest. I think there are some boards, the land use boards come to mind. I know that Traffic and Safety comes to mind, where the institutional knowledge of the sitting members has a real value. And in fashioning that rule, I took that, that advice from listening to other councillor members who had, had reservations about a blanket ten-year rule for all the committees. So that was the reason those committees were taken out of the ten-year rule. Regarding rule number forty-eight.
We may want to defer to the city attorney on that one.
Thank you. The, the basic rule of what constitutes procedural due process in this country, under both state and federal constitutions, is that before any person can be deprived of a protectable interest, usually life, liberty, or property, by the government, that person has to have notice of the potential deprivation and an opportunity to be heard. Leaving aside for a moment the question of whether service on a committee is of protectable interest, this rule actually provides a person with the basic due process. By requiring the mayor to make a decision at least one meeting ahead of time, place it on a council agenda, and therefore, the person being deprived, if you will, of their place on the board or agency or commission, has an opportunity to, to be heard prior to the deprivation, if it is a deprivation. So I guess what I'm saying is, this rule satisfies procedural due process under both the state and federal constitution, if it has to.
Further discussion. There's no, there's nothing pending. We're going to have, I think, a lively discussion on this one when the time comes. Counsel Kennedy.
Just for clarification, would that due process potential take place in non-public or public?
The rule doesn't say, except that the vote would take place in public. The council could deliberate, I think, in non-public, if it so chose.
And I think it's fair to say that, that it would not be one wrong assumption to say that this is a personnel matter, and therefore, could be discussed in private appropriately under state law.
No question.
Such that the voting would occur in public, but the deliberation could occur in private. Out of courtesy to all.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Just checking. Anything else on this one? Okay, we have no motion required, so thank you, Counsel Spear. We now move to miscellaneous and unfinished business. We all have that in our lives, but does anyone have any pertinent to this meeting? Counsel Smith.
Just one, just reminder everyone that the State of the City address is coming up with, at the Sheraton Hotel. If anybody's interested in going, just let me know.
When is it?
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning. One other, Student Government Day, for which you have not received much in the way of information, is coming. It is May seventh, I believe.
And what happened is, the Student Government Day has been more or less a pared-down event for the, for the students, and it will more or less be more of a shadowing type of experience. It won't be any mock city council meeting. This is, there is a change in, in the coordinator, and he felt that this was the way he wanted to go with it. Last year, they did it similar. We meet with our counterparts, mostly on a staff perspective, and we, we spend a half day with them, and then they gather together and talk about their experiences, and we have lunch, and if anybody's interested in attending, certainly, we can come by for lunch, let, let my office know, and we'll make, we usually have lunch in Conference Room A, and they discuss today's events and how they've worked with their counterparts.
Let me also put, point out to you that in some cases, the information you may have received has been that a high school student will call you and say, hi, I'm going to be shadowing you on May seventh. And of course, you know, everybody has their different jobs that they do, and it would be inappropriate, obviously, for someone to shadow you, although Jack may be looking for a free dishwasher. But if, if, if that were the case, these people, my assumption will be, and we'll clarify this, they will come to City Hall, they'll be, presented the function of the council, the civics lesson that we get when we become councilors, and then I'll have an opportunity to meet with them, and I'll be present. We'll make sure that we get a better scheduling of what that's going to be for you, but the city manager has described it basically.
There will not be an individual assigned to you. It's more, because, you know, everybody has things that, you know, in their lives where they, you know, if a student, you know, to try to get them to come to work with you just didn't work, so, you know. So what we try to do is, we gather them together, we try to give them the basic civics type of information, we have them work with the department heads, we talk about how city council sets policy, and we go through the whole interaction of staff with city council and the council manager form of government. And so, for example, I have a student that will be shadowing me, and I'll work with the mayor's counterpart, and there will be a group that will be talking about the city council and how they interact. We're trying to, there's a transition now going on with the Student Government Day. Mayor Kerry Foley had, had done in the past, and now we have a, Robert Ducharme is doing it now, and there's just a little change, and we'll see how it goes.
And typically, so that those of you that, that know traditionally, what had been happening was, they prepare all morning for city council meeting, and then they have it. Councilors often would come, those that were available for the luncheon period, to interact with the students. Some would stay for the meeting, some would not. So you are most welcome. We'll make sure that you have a better time.
There is no meeting.
There, I'm sorry, no meeting, but there will be a luncheon.
There'll be a luncheon.
So the luncheon, you'll be able to come for, and we'll make sure that we get an exact time for you. So I guess that's.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone? With that, it became a motion adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?